Good morning. I would like to call and order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, 10 o'clock meeting of December 10th, 2024. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Would you please rise with me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
District 2, Commissioner Waitman. District 3, Commissioner—
Here on line.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Waitman. District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District 4, Commissioner Jaeger.
Here.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Hi.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Here.
Oh, did I say—
Let it be known, we all have a quorum here. We're four members present and one online. Mr. Steinster, will you please go over today's proceeding regarding the rig organization of the board?
Today is your annual organization. The role of chair to conduct elections will be performed by the clerk and comptroller. The current chair hands the gavel to the clerk, and elections for the chair and vice chair for the board of county commissioners shall be conducted as follows. The clerk shall call for nominations for the full board for the office of chair. Nomination— And nomination does not need to be seconded. Clerk will announce Commissioner X has been nominated for the office of chair. Are there any further nominations? And call for a second time. Once the chair is decided, the chair will conduct elections for vice chair and second vice.
Thank you. Okay. I now open nominations for the office of chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Commissioner Starkey.
Okay, I have a nomination for Commissioner Starkey. A second's not needed, but thank you.
Okay.
Are there any further nominations for chair?
Move nominations, please.
All right. Hearing none, I'm going to close nominations. And since there were no other nominations, congratulations, Commissioner Starkey.
I gotta do that.
You gotta do that.
I gotta, I gotta do the gavel. It's the only time I get to hold the gavel.
Let me get out of the way here.
Did I just do that?
It'll come back. It goes off every time you plug something.
Okay. All right. This time, we will entertain a motion for vice chair.
I nominate for vice chair, Commissioner Mariano.
Okay, are there—we don't take a second, right?
No.
No, right? Are there any other nominations?
Nope.
All right, at this time then, Commissioner Mariano, welcome.
Your nominations are closed.
My nominations are closed. And welcome, Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you very much.
So, at this time, we would typically call for public—
You've got one more, because we added a second vice chair.
We've got a second vice chair.
And I'll make—
Procedure rules. I'll make a nomination that Ms. Jaeger will be the second vice chair.
Well, I'm going to nominate that Seth B. vice chair, so—
What now?
I can make a nomination?
No.
Yeah, you can make a—chair can make a nomination.
Chair can?
Yeah.
And then—
Robert Throe?
Chair can't make a motion, but during nominations, they can.
And I just make that just because of courtesy of length of service here, not that you wouldn't make a wonderful vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay, so how does this work? We vote on the first one first?
Yep.
Okay. And you can vote for yourself, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Waitman, you can vote for yourself. So this time, I would take a vote on Commissioner Waitman—I mean Commissioner Jaeger—for second vice chair.
Okay, I'll vote for myself, then.
So, we have—
I do it as raise of hands.
Okay, raise your hands for Commissioner Jaeger. Two. Okay, Commissioner Waitman. All right. All right, so it's Commissioner Waitman as the second vice chair. Okay, are we done with that now?
Mm-hmm. We're done with that now.
When did we say we were going to have a second vice chair?
We had trouble getting a quorum.
We've discussed it during the year. We've had two or three occasions that we brought it up that we may need one, and so by doing it, then we kind of go away with that problem we had before.
You were the second vice chair and moved up to—
Oh, I didn't remember.
Might move up to next chair.
So now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered for WebEx Link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam Clerk, before we go to your list, we're going to have a presentation from—I think it's WREC. Because we always like to get money first.
Good morning. We bring greetings from Santa today, so I just want to say congratulations, Madam Chair, on your election to the commission and our vice chairs. We greatly appreciate your service to our communities. As y'all are aware, the co-op with Lakucha is member-owned. We are owned by the community that we serve, and since our inception, we have returned with this capital credit refund over a half a billion dollars back to our members. So that is a significant milestone for the cooperative. And on behalf of our board of directors and our employees, we want to say thank you to Pasco County. We work hand-in-hand with your team each and every day and to deliver critical needs and services to our citizens. And we just look forward to another prosperous year. And we want to present you all with a check for $354,055.20 as your fair share of our capital credits that we've refunded. This year, we refunded over $23 million in capital credits to our members across Pasco, Hernando, Citrus, Sumter, and Polk Counties. Not only with that, our rates are significantly lower than most utilities throughout the state of Florida, so we're very proud of that. And we couldn't do that without the hard work and dedication of almost our—of 600 of employees that we have. And we're growing. The cooperative's making over a billion-dollar investment in Pasco County over the next 10 years. You all may be aware, the new power plant that's being built—that power plant is owned by Seminole Electric Cooperative. And who owns Seminole Electric Cooperative? With Lakucha and eight other co-ops throughout the state of Florida. So in order to meet Pasco County's growing needs, we will be investing heavily in infrastructure in our county, which will provide significantly more tax base to this community. And we will certainly continue to invest in our communities as we do all over. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to introduce John McCarty, our district manager. John's been with the cooperative over 32 years, and he helped train me at the co-op when I was on the line. He was my journeyman, so all my bad habits on the line came from John. But he's here, right here locally in Newport Ritchie, and will do a great job for us. And if you ever need anything, and you always can reach out to me directly, but John here is your local contact to be able to do anything that we need to do right here in the west side of the county.
And I want to thank you for the check, but I know this board thanks your company for the great service you provided during Hurricane Helene in Milton, and how you stepped in and helped the other power companies. It's very admirable, so we greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Mariano?
Yes. You know, David, John, I just can't say enough great things about with Lakucha Electric. What you guys do for the community's been amazing. This storm is just another one that you've gone through, and you had everything in place. You set up a clear communication line so we could call, put the information with staff who would get to you. And then sometimes you guys were so quick and so efficient, the other people didn't know that you already done the work that they were waiting on. Seapines just recently where you had gone up there. But what you guys do for the community is just amazing. I mean, you guys have made innovative strides to try to help Pasco grow, which has worked very, very well. You help our community with all the scholarships you give out. And you guys don't know this yet because it just happened yesterday, but there was a local citizen right in the middle of the Hudson area that had a couple of trees right on the canal, but they were a little bit too tall to be able to get a regular ladder up to it to get to. Put a call up to David and John, and within four days, they're out there, put the lights up, and now Hudson, in the heart of the—near Clark Street, near Lonnie Lee, you'll see a big tree with a lot of lights around it. The whole community's going to celebrate on Wednesday night. So you didn't have to do that. Wasn't a long time sequence for you to go do it, but that effort that you made in the community just to make it a little bit better for the season is just greatly appreciated. So, thanks for all you do.
Yes.
Also, I want to thank you guys. Prior to the hurricane, I had a family that had a fire in your—and had with Lakucha, and I called you guys, and you came through within a day and helped that family out. So I really appreciate that.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Oakley.
David, I certainly appreciate everything you do in our community and the work you've done in years past. Even when Mr. Brown was there, you were part of all those actions and did a great job. During the storm, you shined like the biggest star you'd ever think because y'all were very, very prepared. And you could tell the work that you did, it moved very smoothly. You're getting things back to order. So, we certainly appreciate all you did and that effort, and that effort that you put out to help others. Very well noticed. Thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
All right, we're going to come down and take a photo, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, at this time, we will take public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Madam Chair, we do. I will—I got quite a few, so I'll call you up in names of three so you know who's on deck. We have Lisa Moretti, followed by Michael—sorry, I don't know the spelling of the name, but it's Polterak maybe? And then Julia—I don't know how to—I can't really tell, but I think it's any Barthunak. But if I crush that, I'm so sorry. Oh, did I say it right?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Ms. Moretti, are you here?
I am.
Okay, please come up. And when you come to the podium, please remember to state your name and address, and then you may proceed with your comments.
Hi, I'm Lisa Moretti, 16331 Iowa Woods Trail, Dade City, Florida. I wanted to come to speak today because we've been following the Connected Cities Project. OPAGA is presenting their report to the legislature about how that has progressed, sort of a report card. And with a lot of the flooding that we've seen over in that area, and with the Tall Timbers Project coming up for hearing, there's quite a few things with that project that we have been watching that we feel are out of alignment with what the MPUD says. So I'd like to bring your attention to that. Also, the swift mud standard that we use for flooding—the state regs do not say that we have to use swift mud as our yardstick. We choose to do that. And I would like to encourage you to find a different standard to use, because it seems that that standard really doesn't meet the new weather pattern that we're in. Every storm is unprecedented, each time we see one. And the flooding that we've seen, the folks that are over in places like Connerton, Aaron Cut Off, Fort King Road, over near Morningside, still underwater, many of them. So, we haven't got the right standard in place, and I'd like to encourage you to maybe consider using some of the standards out of EFTA, which is far more extensive, and maybe evolving how we handle flooding in the future. I'm also very concerned about some of the reckless development that's going on. Developers are ignoring the things that you've asked them to do in many places across the county. And so consequently, we have some crazy things going on. You'll hear about one of them from a resident with Crella Development, where they've just decided that her property is theirs. And no pushback. We need the support for residents from you, and we need the support from our planning division and our county offices. I would like to really say that the planning office has been very responsive, and we appreciate that, that they've listened to us, and that they have taken the time to sit down with us and really hear what we're trying to say. So, I would encourage you to take a deeper look at the things that are going on in development after they've passed through your decision-making process, because many of them are not following the very things that you asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't allow clapping here. Thank you.
So, if—when I called your name, if you'd just come right on up. So, Michael, I believe it's Polterak. And then Julia—I don't know if I'm going to be able to do it again—Barthunak. And then John Kane.
There's an overhead to go with this. Thank you. Perfect. My name's Michael Polterak. I'm representing the Pasco County Connected Residents Group. We're now coming together and going to be a much louder voice with this connected city issue. My address is 9152 Kenton Road, Wesley Chapel, 33545.
Thank you.
As Lisa just mentioned, OPAGA put their report to the state. That's based on county reports. The last one was 23, and I'm not sure currently we would receive amazing scores if they came down here and took a look at what we were doing. With the Connected City MPUD, we are missing our vision and values of what was handed out to the county and to the residents back in 2015 on what was going to come here for the community. This is a map of the SPA zones. You can see there's five districts. We all know it's the business or EOD, northern, southern innovation zones, the community hub, and then the urban business core. Over half of your principles are based on health, wellness, outdoor parks, meeting spaces, living a healthier lifestyle. It's in the MPUD. Your MPUD very clearly defines that there's a need for community gardens, farmers' markets, a district park, outdoor vibrant meeting spaces that abut and work with the schools that are going to be put into the connected city to make a healthier lifestyle for everybody. It also says that these parks are going to be the bridge that brings all of the community developments together and brings it in relationship to the other districts of the connected city. This is the picture of the school and the high-tech buildings that was sold to us. These are pictures that were sold to us that the beautiful business district is going to become. Unfortunately, the EOD, the 965 acres, is being advertised as 5.5 million square feet of distribution and industrial. 2.5 million square feet is going to be specifically distribution. We're gonna have a truck stop. I'm going to skip ahead here. I'm going to skip ahead here, but this in your MPUD master plan specifically states we will have a district park, everything that I highlighted earlier, and that those areas would be in the community hub. And it's so important, it's also stated and protected in the North and South Innovation Zones. Every one of these red squares is already rezoned for developers to foot housing in. There is only one parcel of land, it just happens to be Tall Timbers, remaining that could be used for your district park and everything that's stated that this, that defines the community hub. It also abuts the urban core and connects with three of the districts directly. So, this parcel could actually fulfill the definition that you put forward on what the connected city is supposed to be. The reason that we feel this project right now would not receive passing scores is because the EOD has turned into distribution, the Southern Innovative District has turned into a fancy community pool, the Northern Innovation Zone is another fancy community pool, and in the urban core, right now, one-fifth of what was supposed to be deemed in 2015 by legislative action as the urban core, one-fifth of that area, in 2020, we turned into a multimillion-dollar county fleet management facility. We have a fancy oil change station for more trucking right in the middle of the urban core. We knew that that was supposed to be zoned for urban core, and what we're doing as a county is not fulfilling the definition.
Oh, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I didn't, I was engrossed.
Julia Bartunak, 2645 Meadowway Drive, Newport Richie, Florida, 34655. And I'm here today to just say that the C-11 Penny for Pasco funds should not go to subsidize a developer. Penny for Pasco would be better to help our first responders that helped us during the hurricanes, would be better to help with stormwater resiliency with upcoming climate disasters, and also to help with our schools, to give increase in salaries for our teachers. The first responders, our police officers and our teachers have a lot of trauma, and I'm nervous, so I'm going to stop.
Take a deep breath.
Thank you.
I know this happened to you before. It's okay, you can do it.
Thank you.
Oh. I know. Practice makes perfect.
Yeah, please, just Penny for Pasco should go for the people, not for themselves.
All right, we have John Kane, followed by Larry Conwell, followed by Al Hiller.
I'm John Kane.
We need your address, sir.
6041 Florida Avenue, Newport Richie, Florida.
Thank you.
I came to speak on the development also, I mean, I hear from everybody, I also, I don't think it's a secret, we're fast and furious in our county. Anybody that's lived here a long time understands the big change. I'm concerned about the method. I know we're not going to stop the development. I'm not gullible. I know that kind of money rules, and that's what it's going to be. But I think we should set up some guardrails. We had a lot of land cleared out, and the method that they used was kind of archaic. They, they just clumped all the trees up and they burned. And that burning went on, and it was, you know, these, these parcels of land, even though they're big parcels, they're, they're in the midst of, of already existing homes and schools and hospitals. There's old people, there's children, and we got PPMs going up in the air, we got large plumes of smoke traveling with the wind going everywhere. It, to me, I was kind of shocked to see it, especially in this day and age. I was a forestry student years ago, and I have to tell you, the technology now, there's no reason for that. I talked to somebody from DEP because I thought that we were kind of restrained by state standards, because that's what I heard from the county. Anytime I put it out there, complained was that, well, this is a burn state. And this fellow from DEP assured me that every county runs it different, and that you have the right to run it different, and you could bring in an air curtain incinerator, you could demand that these developers bring in an air curtain incinerator, and you would never see any smoke. You would never send any parts per million up into the air. It would keep the air clean, it would keep our water clean, it's good for the citizens, good for everyone's health. So, I would ask you to please look into doing that, maybe form an ordinance for demanding that, that when they come here to our county, that they use an air curtain incinerator. It would benefit them too, to be honest, because it burns everything really fast. When you throw everything in there, it's almost like a wind tunnel, and it just, it just burns up the trees at a faster pace. It wouldn't be smoldering all night long like it does and blowing over different housing areas in Newport Richie. So, I, like I say, I'm kind of surprised we haven't done it already, but I'm going to ask, please look into that. We don't need to do it this way. Consider your citizens more than you do the developers. That's what I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Conwell, and I live at 35659 Stella Bass Drive in Zephyr Hills, and I'm here looking for consideration or direction for an intersection that has been busy, let's say. It's the intersection of at Riles, Silver Island Ranch Boulevard and Island Road. And it's, the problem is, is that that is a very busy intersection. People block the intersection, so the two roads can't get onto the main drive of Island Road. Many accidents have been there. So, way I understand it is that I did talk to one of my representative offices. They said that there's going to be a stoplight in 2027. In the meantime, I would request for some consideration or direction that some signs that could be put up to say, do not block the intersection. They have that on Morse Bridge Road and Chancy. There was by there, but it's, it was, said, do not block the driveway, I guess, on that part there. The other thing is, is that at least, I don't know if this is a possibility, but when you come off of Dean Dairy Road, and I'm talking about in Zephyr Hills, onto Island Road heading west, I guess it would be, there is a speed limit sign that says 55 miles an hour. That might be great back in the day when the development wasn't so prevalent and there wasn't so many houses and traffic, to at least consider maybe changing the speed limit sign to like a 35 or a 45. That's all I have. Thanks for letting me speak, and have a great day.
Thank you, and our traffic guys are listening, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Al Hiller, I think he's making his way up, and we have Jerry Ringsby, followed by Wanda Chasnov.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Al Hiller. I live at 13013 Booby Court, beautiful downtown Hudson, Florida. Congratulations, Chairwoman. I had to change things around here while the seat was popping around. On behalf of many of the people of Pasco County, I want to thank you for all the help that you've given us during this disaster time. Chairwoman Starkey, Commissioner Seth Whitman, Commissioner Ron Oakley, and Commissioner Gary If you may have noticed, I didn't recognize one of our commissioners. This is because he is the Commissioner for District 5. This is where I live. Recently, after the storm, I found, I found him helping two veterans in their 90s cleaning and removing debris from their house from the storm. He's been at most association meetings in his district, answering questions and reassuring people that Pasco County was there to help them and rebuild their homes. He works tirelessly for Pasco County in District 5, and he's always looking to the future. Commissioner Mariano, I'd like to present you with just some of the letters and notes that the people of your district gave to me to give to you.
Move to receive and file, I guess? I'll take a motion? I can't take a motion?
If it's for the Commissioner, then it doesn't want to be in the record. If the Commissioner wants it in the record...
And Al, while you're out there, this is Commissioner Yeager, took Mr., Commissioner Bradford, she was phenomenal out there, dude.
Phenomenal.
Every step of the way.
All right, thank you for, excuse me for missing you.
Yeah.
Many are called, but for your chosen, but...
She did a wonderful job, too.
Like I've said to Jack many times, if you're not doing your job, you're not hearing a lot of complaint. Thank you, Commissioners, for what you do for us.
We appreciate you coming and saying what you did. Thank you.
Jerry Ringsby, followed by Wanda Chasnov, followed by Irene, I think it's Wellen, maybe?
I think it's Jerry Kingsley. Is that what that is?
Oh, I don't know. It could be a K or an R. I just went with the R because it looked more like an R.
That's fine. My name is Jerry Kingsley, 1509 Kinsmere Drive, Trinity Oaks, Florida. I am here because of Storyland. I'm not sure if that's on the agenda. I heard it was, I don't really know. 20 years ago, I addressed this commission. Some of you were on the commission back then. 20 years ago was the first time my house flooded, and now, this is the fourth time that it's flooded. A little over two months ago, we had a natural disaster, but what followed that natural disaster, to me, was gross mismanagement of our infrastructure. I was, I worked for a small construction company. I am out in Gulf Harbors. That's a natural disaster. What happened by me, again, is gross mismanagement of our infrastructure. I know we need to grow as a community, and I'm okay with that, but not at my expense, my neighbor's expense, and everybody in that part of Pasco County. So, I'm begging you, please, let's fix the infrastructure before we continue to grow. You guys promised it, you promised it all the time, and you can't not keep doing that. I heard this, think about two months ago. How can we forget about that already? All of that, because it's not me. It's not my cheese. Not my cheese means, well, it didn't affect me, and it probably didn't affect any of you up there. I don't know. Didn't affect any of you personally. It affected me personally. This is the fourth time. Used to be, this is a 100-year event, 100-year event, 100-year event. We've changed it to a 1,000-year event now. How many 100-year events can happen in my lifetime? So, we, the associate, the citizens are pleading with you, please, do the right thing, fix this infrastructure. It has got to be fixed. You cannot, think about what you're going to do. If you saw pictures, and I'm assuming, and I know some of you were out in the community two months ago, think about what that Walgreens looked like, what that church looked like. There was a river in front of there, and we're talking about growing there? I'm for the community growing. My kids are older now, but not at my expense. So, I know we're early in this, but even if this Storyland thing is a story, I don't care. You still have to fix this infrastructure. It cannot continue to happen. Again, this wasn't a natural disaster. You can say that it is, but it's not. It was, been mismanagement. If this was the first time it happened, I'd say, oh, my gosh. But this has happened multiple, multiple, multiple times on, again, a lot of your watch. And, and everybody out east, where that new money's coming from, they're high and dry. Not everybody, I know there are some, but a lot of people out east, they're high and dry. Thank you, and please fix that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good morning, my name is Wanda Chasnov, and I live at 6608 Status Lane. Good morning, Board. I'm here on good and bad, okay? The bad is, is I live on Green Key, off of Green Key Road. We have a wooded area that the homeless people have overtaken. Yesterday, we had an event. I'm rebuilding my house, and I'm unable to stay in my home, and so I come to my home every morning, and I've been helping the senior citizens that live on my street to get everybody's house back together. I went there yesterday morning, and I was humbled by the people of the community about that they had been kept up all night by the homeless people screaming for help. They called the authorities, no one came. I got there, I called 911. I said, we need somebody here. And I found out the Colleen of Mr. Mariano's secretary had gotten a permanent trespass on this property. Well, everybody's upset because we're trying to rebuild our home, and we're fighting with the homeless people, and we can't get nowhere. We need some help with the county to do what needs to be done to get them out of there. They were there this morning, they went through there, there was nobody there because they go to the church for breakfast every morning. No sooner than the code enforcement man left there, they were. Even the guy that they took out yesterday that was naked out there in the woods and everything, hollering help all night long. They took him out, and an hour later, he was right back there. We can't continue to live like this and try to put our houses together. We're all senior citizens. I'm 66 years old. I can't continue to do this. I need your help to make the man who owns the property do something about it. Clean it off, fence it off, do whatever you got to do. Stop putting the taxpayers in jeopardy because these people are dangerous. They bound syringes and everything else there. It's got to stop. If not, I'm going there with a gun, and I'll make sure it's gone. So, I'm asking for your help, and I want to rebuild my house. I've been there 17 years, and Jack, you've helped me as much as you can, and I need the Board to help us, the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the rest of the folks who are going to speak to line up because we have a very full morning, and so I need to, we have, we still have a lot of people on the line, so if you would call them, and we'll get you to start lining up.
Okay. We have Eileen, I think it's Wellen. Welch, okay, thank you, sorry.
Nice to meet you. First time I've ever met you.
Okay, let me, hold on just a moment, I'm going to call the names first, okay?
At least get me five.
Okay, we'll do the first five. Mary Lou Kaiser, Lisa Vergiglio, I'm sorry, I probably said that wrong, and then Alan Rose, and Peter DeLeo. Okay. If you're unable to stand for that period of time, just let us know.
Okay, let's go. Name and address.
I'm sorry, my name is Irene Welch. I live at 5119 Green Key Road. I live right next to this homeless camp place that Wanda was talking about. I have a video of what these people listen to. I arrive again because I'm, I've been flooded. I live in the Tishan Hotel, and I come every morning to set up my new home. I'm trying to set up a new home for an autistic child and myself. There's two people that live in that home. It is very dangerous. There's needles everywhere. We have traffic of 20 people, different people that I counted, coming every single day on bikes, in and out, in and out. I've seen drug transactions. I haven't even moved in. I paid December's rent, and I am stuck, because you know what the rental market is? Crazy, crazy. High or not available. I am blessed that I have this home, and I want to make it the best home I can for my child, and this is not safe. If I played this video with this man was hooting and hollering, you'd be like, what? I have it. If you'd like to hear it.
Can you just send it to us when you're done speaking?
I will. It is bad, and it's dangerous. I'm in fear of my life. There's an elderly woman, she's going to speak next with an, again, another autistic child, and we live across and next, and this is, we have to deal with this. It's, it's bad. The trash I picked up, 16 bags of trash, singly by myself. There's syringe needles in the alleyway, where I can't let my child walk outside my gated house because we don't know if he's going to see a needle. They're everywhere. I mean, I've never lived, I'm from Boston, and I've, I've lived in the ghetto, and I have never seen as much needles ever in this area. This is bad. Green Key can be beautiful. That area is one mile from a beach. I was so excited to get that property, and it, I told everyone, I'm moving to Green Key. Ew, that's the response. No, you got, that's got to be fixed. Green Key is beautiful.
I'll just let you know that we're going to have a discussion on what we can do with private property owners and trespassing, because that's not the only parcel.
I feel like I got lucky in moving in a nice place, and then it turned out it was a nightmare.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're working.
Mary Lou Kaiser, followed by Lisa Vergilio. I knew that G was pronounced differently. Then Alan Rose, then Peter DeLeo. I'm going to call the ones that have signed up, and then after that, then anyone else can line up behind them because I believe there's others in line that I did not call. And then we have Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Robert Ritchie, and then Pastor Jen, and I always pronounce your name, last name wrong, Carowack. Oh, I did it right. Okay. And then after that, then you can line up if you have other public comments that didn't sign up. Good morning, Ms. Kaiser.
Well, thank you all for listening to me. I'm Mary Lou Kaiser. I'm at 6518 Westside Drive, but also on the two lots that's right on Green Key, which is my yard. So I have three pieces of property, okay? This was my dream, was to be a snowbird in this late time of my life because I'm from Kentucky. Winters are tough. It was just a dream of being here where it's warm. But when I came here three years ago, I found the property, but of course, I didn't know what I was going to be content with seeing because I'm in rural Kentucky with no neighbors and no screaming and no drugs. They may be in their homes, but not right in my face. So I'm right across the street from this homeless creatures. They're in and out all the time, every day. It's not 10 people. It's no telling how many people's going. And then I'm right in, that's my yard. They're right across. I can almost shake their hand. It's been going on, it's been going on ever since I've been here for three years. I tried to come in the winter, I tried to come in the winter in January, but this time I had to come quickly because of the flood. And so I've been here longer than I usually am. I'm usually not here until January. But the epidemic we have there, right by the alley, they live behind my fence. They live behind my fence. They live across the street. And I'm from a state, a little country town that our property is everything to us. Our children, our property is, is everything. We've got our investment there. I came here, the place was all grown up, and I seen there was a little problem with the epidemic of homelessness, but man, oh, man, every time I come, it's more and more. And there are people, I guess, that buys their property, and they buy it to be a write-off, and they're not paying any attention. But you come in and mess and poop on my, you poop and do your thing on my property in Kentucky, you won't be there long, you know? And when we had this flood, and I'll end with this, when we had this flood and I had to come fast, I had just had hip surgery, and they released me to come right on because I wanted to save my property. I mean, that's my old age investment is what I have in that three pieces of property there on my address says Westside Drive, but I'm facing Green Key right across from this epidemic of creatures, okay? I came fast, and the mess that you see from this is unbelievable. And I, we need something done. I mean, no one should invade.
Thank you very much.
No one should invade.
We'll take, we will take it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Vergilio. I live at 14104 Little Ranch Road, Spring Hill, the Pasco side, otherwise known as Shady Hills. I'm proud to say that I live in Shady Hills. Someone in my immediate family has lived there since 1980. Lot has happened in 44, well, 45 years. Most notably, the development projects. I'm sure you're all aware. I used to be able to shower, do laundry, and water my yard all at the same time. Now, I barely have a trickle. My aquifer is negatively impacted and has been compromised by the growth. I'm not the only one, and I'd like to know how I'm supposed to fix it when I know it's all a part of the development going in, the developments that have been approved. I'm not opposed to growth, and I'm not opposed to advancement. My opposition at this point is how much growth is being allowed in the Shady Hills area. Shady Hills is more or less 29 square miles, and in 2020, the population was 11,690. That population number is about to explode. There are apartments and homes and car washes and storage units that are all currently being built or planned. Again, I'm not opposed to growth, but please, slow it down. Shady Hills Road from 52 to County Line Road has only two traffic lights, which makes it basically a speedway. I've watched accidents happen, and there have been several deaths to human and livestock on Shady Hills Road. I don't have children at Mariage Ella or Cruz Lake Middle or Shady Hills Elementary. I don't understand how, with a clear conscience, developments are allowed, but there are no sidewalks, there's not enough traffic lights, and the roads are not wide enough to accommodate the new growth coming in. I see children daily near all of these schools, and frankly, I'm afraid of them, afraid for them and their parents. It would only take one misstep by a child for a tragedy to happen. The blatant disregard for the health and well-being of Shady Hills residents should be a top priority before allowing new housing developments and new businesses. According to the Pasco County Commissioner's website, under Service Excellence, it states that you are, that you serve to make the community better, that you place the citizens' and customers' interests first. I don't see that. No disrespect, but I see the almighty dollar coming first. There has to be a middle ground somewhere, and frankly, I can't imagine why so much development is being allowed without road widening, sidewalks, and traffic signals. With all of this development, Shady Hills is about to lose the Florida charm that drew most of us there. I may not know everyone who lives in Shady Hills, but what I do know is...
Thank you very much. You almost got it.
Thank you.
No problem. Mr. Rose.
Alan Rose, followed by Peter DeLeo, followed by...
Guys, come up just a little closer. I need every second.
Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Robert Ritchie, and then Pastor Jen Carowack.
Good morning. I have documents for the Board.
I'll take a motion.
I move.
All in favor? Aye.
Alan Rose, 10221 Hilltop Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida. I know you used to see me on coastal waterways issues. That's my specialty. Today, I'm here on something different. I'm here representing my community of Golden Acres. Presently, I was at the last planning board meeting, and the owner-investor that purchased the property, Golden Acres Phase One, Lot Two, and this is, this is on your agenda today at P-81. Phase One, Lot Two, represented to the planning board, the need to convert this property from residential to high-density commercial.
Mr. Rose, if this is a public hearing this afternoon, that's when you should be making your comments.
Okay. I thought this was public comment. I should bring Mr. Preborn for that, or just bring it this afternoon?
If you wanted it as part of the record of that hearing, that's when you need to make your comments. Now, Board can take them now, but if it's a quasi-judicial item, that's when, that's, there's a time and place for these comments.
Okay. Well, I apologize.
To you this afternoon.
All right.
We'll hang on to these. Thank you.
Public hearing starts at 1:30.
Good morning. My name is Peter DeLeo. I live at 7134 Orchid Lake Road, Newport Ritchie, 34653. This is regarding Orchid Lake Road subdivision in Orchid Lake. There's, there's a lot of traffic going down that road, and a couple of kids almost got hit. I almost got hit walking my dog. There's a couple of schools back there, and it's, we put a petition in for speed bumps, but it got denied because there wasn't that many people that were signing for it. But there's rentals there. People are trying to sell their homes, and it's like a highway. It's like, you call it US-19. That's what you should call it. Because they come down the road and doing 40, 50 miles an hour. I noticed two signs on the road. One says 30 at the beginning of the road, and one says near the school, 30 over there. But they're rushing to get to the school. In the morning, it's like a zoo. I called the Sheriff's Department multiple times. They said they patrol the area. I haven't seen one patrol car there. They said they gave 39 violations. I even called District Four, Lisa, I believe it was, and I put, asked her about it, and she tried to help, and she couldn't do it. And I told her I was coming here to talk to these people about this issue. It has to be done. Something has to be done. And then another issue I have is the roads in Orchid Lake Village are falling apart. I have pictures here. I took pictures, I walk around the neighborhood. It's like potholes all over the place. This, I've been living here 39 years in this area and in that community, and I watched the community grow and everything, but it's just falling apart. I can't see a community go, go to garbage like it is, you know? It's, you know, I don't know what to say on this.
Mr. Branford, could you meet outside with him and talk about road calming devices and see if Orchid Lake is on the paving assessment schedule? Thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Robert Ritchie, followed by Pastor Jen Carowack, and then anyone else who did not sign up.
Nancy Hazelwood, 34110. A nice place. It's nice to see you over here instead of over there. It's a bit of a change. First, I would like to thank you all for arranging a meeting with Tampa Bay Water. It was very insightful for the citizens of Northeast Rural. We are very afraid if a well field is put in the Northeast Protected Area that we will soon have a wastewater treatment plant, and then the rural area can be developed at high density. Northeast Rural now has only well and, has only well and septic because it takes a bit of land, and that's what's helped keeping us rural there. So we hope you will give that matter some attention and keep us rural out there. I have another question. I know you all don't answer questions. Mr. Oakley's told me that a few times. I was wondering why the Board continues to listen to the same people who represent the development community when they have failed quite a few times, over and over again, to follow through with what they have promised. Their projects go on, and nothing is done, even though you all passed it with conditions. It has been agreed on, and it is in the application by the Board at public hearings. This affects this Board. We see this. We see you all voting on this, and then when it comes to fruition, it's something completely different. If you want your word to stand for something in this county, it might behoove you all to make sure that the applicants either follow through, or maybe you could just quit listening to them after this happens three times. Maybe it's, shouldn't, they shouldn't be up in front of you again. I was at Connected Cities' first meeting, and if I remember correctly, they actually promised to do the jobs first. I don't think we're seeing that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Rob Ritchie. I live at 15814 Antler Lane in Shady Hills, and I represent the residents of Shady Hills with our concerns about the rapid development in the area. I, like Linda, who spoke before me on behalf of Shady Hills, do not deny that change is inevitable. I've lived in Shady Hills since 1976, and I've seen it cycle multiple times. What I'm concerned about is the lack of infrastructure planning for the area. Shady Hills Road is a superhighway during the operation, the daytime hours, and that's not counting any of the development that is now currently underway. The majority of the traffic, and I've unofficially checked on it, 90% of it is Hernando County traffic. So how many residents in Pasco County, in Shady Hills now and future, have to be affected or killed, the future residents, because of this uncontrolled traffic? I was recently in need of emergency services within the last month. I live two miles from the fire department. It took them 30 minutes to get to me. I coded in the hospital because of the delay. And all I ask is that there be something done. Why not at least a caution light at Little Ranch Road and Shady Hills Road? I've brought this up before in an unofficial meeting. There's not that. Every other fire department has one. We don't. And obviously, there doesn't need to be a caution light directly in front of the fire station on Little Ranch Road, but can we have it on Shady Hills Road? I've been in traffic witnessing the emergency vehicles trying to get out, and they can't. And motorists, where do they go? They have to pull off the road. The shoulders are so soft due to the fact that we have no sidewalks, due to the fact we have no trails, we have nothing, so the four-wheeler traffic and the pedestrian traffic has to share the road or use the shoulder. I witnessed just the other day a woman in a wheelchair who was homeless being pushed through Sugar Stand on Shady Hills Road to her homeless camp. That shouldn't be. And I just implore you all to please consider the growth and the future effects of this growth. I know two to five years, Shady Hills Road is, is going to be even worse, and it's not on the schedule. So think about what we might do to at least help with the pedestrian traffic and the bicycle traffic that has to utilize Shady Hills Road. Not here to complain about the homeless. They're there. They're going to be displaced as the development continues, and we understand that. But we have to do something. We have to be better for the future growth. Shady Hills Road probably can't be widened right away, and even the development that the Del Webb community, as I'm driving by it yesterday, when we do decide to widen Shady Hills Road, it's got to go west. So what, to the west side? Because the Del Webb sidewalk is already within 15 feet of the edge of Shady Hills Road. So now, the cost of widening Shady Hills Road will be quadruple because the power lines will all have to be moved. We had a perfect opportunity to utilize setbacks with these developments beforehand, and we didn't. And now the developments are going to be built, so we have to go west, so it's going to cost my tax dollars and everybody else's tax dollars more to widen a road that could have been planned for in advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pastor Jen Carowack, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida, in the Shady Hills area. And today, and as last time, I was before you, something was on my heart, so today, James 116, "Do not be deceived, my beloved brethren. Every good gift and every perfect gift is from above." And in my opinion, my humble opinion, it is a good gift to be placed in the position that each of you have been placed in, with the responsibility to advocate for the citizens of your counties, of your community, the place where we are today, Pasco County. And these good gifts come from the Father of Lights, with whom there is no variation or shadow of turning. Of his own will, he brought us forth by the Word of Truth. So then, my beloved brethren, let every man be swift to hear, slow to speak, slow to wrath, for the wrath of man does not produce the righteousness of God. And so I'm here today not to bring wrath of any particular person, but to attempt to bring forth the righteousness of God. And it, as we, as we continue to come to these meetings, and, and as the gentleman who brought forward the Connected Cities plan, and I think he said 2015, and as I know that there's a woman at the local transportation, disadvantaged transportation board meeting that said that they started to ask for the widening of Shady Hills Road in 2005, which was her first time serving in the capacity on that board. And every meeting that I come to, I come with, with, you know, the hopefulness that as we come forward and as we come to the table to collaborate, that we will be heard. And I do not want to see people hurt, and I don't mean to bore you, Commissioner Oakley. I do not want to come here in, in wrath, but it is a great concern that the people feel like they come and they're not heard, the people feel like that they can't go to their commissioners and be heard. And I appreciate all of the meetings that I've had with those that I have met with, with Commissioner Mariano, Commissioner Waitman, Commissioner Starkey, and Commissioner Oakley. I appreciate that sincerely. But I really just plead with you to consider everything that you hear when it's brought forward, and as these developments and as these decisions are made, that you consider it a good gift...
Thank you. Thank you very much. From God. Thank you for coming. Next. Is there anyone else after this gentleman that wants to speak? They need to get in line? Because I have a time certain, and I'm going to honor it, because I have to leave after that. And Commissioner Mariano, you'll be running the meeting for the rest of, until lunchtime, till after lunch?
Come up to the podium.
Please stand up closer to the mic, all of you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Shamista Gray. I live at eighty-two oh five, Changers Square, Changers Square apartment. I came here probably like a couple of months ago after the hurricanes, stating that I was being evicted. I thank you for your county for assisting me with the rent. Also, as speaking to residents, they said, some saying they was there a couple of months, and they never got eviction. And I'm trying to figure out what made it a difference, you know, my one time being late, that they immediately evicted me. Also, it's a lot that's going on. I feel, you know, that I was exterminated against, basically. You know, as I talked to some residents, they were like, oh, I was here two months they haven't evicted me. Oh, lady, like at the end of the month, she was able to pay her rent, but you immediately evicted me. I feel it's not right. You know what I'm saying? What's the purpose of your program, building these properties, and then you want to evict people? You go to the, I guess I looked up, what had funded them, the SHIP program. They go to them saying they want to help the homeless peoples. Okay, if you're trying to help the homeless people, why are you trying to immediately evict them? What's the purpose of you building the community? You know, I'm just so tired of, you know, like I said before, I speak on the board. I go to Charlie House. I help fight for these funds for these properties to get this money. And I can't get, I'm getting like, like, they just don't care. You know what I'm saying? I feel like I'm going to give up. I'm going to stop speaking for them to get these funds to build these properties and stuff like that. I speak on news media, TV. You know, I go to Charlie House. I've been to Washington DC to get funds for these properties, and then you want to evict us like that? You know, I just don't know what to say. I'm just overwhelmed. I'm stressed out. I'm tired. You know what I'm saying? It seems like nothing's working. You know what I'm saying? They get these properties and do people any kind of way. I heard that this lady said that she had, her husband was in the hospital. They evicted her. Okay. It's something needed, a plan needed to come. You know what I'm saying? This disaster displaced us. It's not like we missed rent, like missed the rent, like because we wanted to, because we just don't want to work. We missed rent because of the storm. I have eviction on my record because I got displaced for my job.
Kathy, is there someone that can speak with her?
No, they've been assisting me. They've been assisting me. I appreciate them for helping me and stuff like that. But it's a point, I'm speaking for other people, how they do people with disabilities. It's not right. You getting these properties for what? I see people on the property have company trucks on the property. Why they have company trucks on the property? They owe for income, I'm pretty sure, but you're not evicting them.
Okay. She'll speak with you.
That don't make no sense. You know what I'm saying? People that really need the property, you know, they taking advantage of the property when they have companies. I don't know if they going up on the other names and stuff, getting the property. I see so many company trucks on that property. That's not right.
Thank you. Okay, come on.
Good morning. My name is Eric Johnson. I'm from sixteen two ten Crellis Drive in Shady Hills. I'm here to speak about the Crellis Estates development behind the property that I have. There is a problem with myself and my neighbor. We have an access that goes to the property that they're developing. When this was discussed, there was no mention at any point of putting in a road. And when I say a road, there's a significant elevation difference. The front of my yard to the back of my yard is about a fourteen-foot difference, and they've pretty much matched the road to match the front grade all the way back. So I have a roughly fourteen-foot berm on the west side of my, or east side of my property with a retention pond behind that that's been built up. We have reached out to planning. We've reached out to the commissioners, and there's a conflict of stories that's coming back. Somebody made a comment, well, the land was up for grabs. This is the deed.
Can someone close that door back there?
This is the deed for the property that I've had since two thousand and two, and I assure you, it's not up for grabs. Absolutely not. When I hear the conflicts between the different agencies within the county from comments from the commissioners, and the fact that when you put your sign up for the rezoning of the parcel, it was blank, that's a lot of shenanigans. All right? None of us are opposed to growth, but it's not going to be on my property at my expense. They took down a three-hundred-year-old tree without so much as a door knock. They took down my fence without so much as a door knock. They're out there at three o'clock in the morning pouring concrete. They are out there on holidays, weekends. They don't care. I care. I raised my sons in that house, and now my grandson's in that house. Three generations. It needs to stop. You are the stewards of it. You need to take charge.
Thank you very much. We are going to discuss this property later. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Kopker, and I live in eight four two six Coral Creek Loop, and I'm here to talk about the Beacon Park development. My house is right next to the Hall Route, Father Development. They've been doing it for about two months now, and when they first started, they tore down a bunch of trees and put up fencing, and then they started the development. We've had a lot of soot in our land. We've complained to our HOA, and recently, they have been trying to put down water to make the soot problem on our properties lessen, and I thank you for that. When they put the fencing up, they went a little bit too far when they were digging, and they actually dug on my land. But my next-door neighbor has the backyard full of grass, and it's nice. When they were doing the development, I did talk to some of the people, saying, hey, you guys, you're on my land. Can you at least just fill it in? I don't care about that, but it's a safety hazard right now. People that are doing maintenance on the property, or even the people that mow our lawns, is it just a hole there? And I'm worried that because it's on my property, I may have, I might be liable if something happened. So what I'm really asking for, I guess, and I went to our HOA. Recently, our chairmans have changed, very recently. So I got to get to the new chairman now to re-talk to them about this problem, but it's a safety issue, and I'm worried about that. And anything that Mr. Mariano can do with our HOA, working with the development, would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
JP, can you meet with him as well? Because this is the same one we talked about a while ago, but it might be more information you can get. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone online that wishes to take public comment?
I don't believe we have anyone online for public comment.
Okay. Because we have an eleven fifteen time certain, I'm going to take up the consent agenda now.
You have an eleven and an eleven fifteen.
The eleven was withdrawn.
Okay.
So we'll go on to the consent agenda. Then we have an eleven fifteen time certain. Then we will go to the resolutions. Okay? I have in front of me a poll sheet. I have C twenty-seven, C fifty-six, C sixty-six, C sixty-eight, C twenty-six, C thirty-five, and C sixty-two. Are there any other polls from the consent?
C thirty-three for discussion.
C thirty-three. Okay.
You've got twenty-seven, fifty-six, sixty-six, and sixty-eight are all being withdrawn.
Right.
And then you've got the others.
Some poll and revise. Is there anything else? Okay. We'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I approve by roll call.
Sorry. I can second it. Okay, roll call.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Okay, C twenty-seven, fifty-six, sixty-six, and sixty-eight are withdrawn. C twenty-six. And guys, if you're going to speak, please be ready, because we're pressed for time here. So whoever has C thirty-five and C sixty-two, please be ready.
Good morning, Board of Facilities Management, Andrew Baxter, Facilities Director, speaking. C twenty-six is being revised to amend the way it's being discussed to delegate authority to the county administrator, and then also the distribution section has also been revised slightly. But with those revisions, this is basically the restart of construction for the East Pasco Senior Center. So we recommend approval.
I'll take a motion.
I move. Second.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. C sixty-two.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ryan Glenn, Fire Chief. C sixty-two is pulled and revised to just clarify some language. Instead of utilizing the original agreement, we actually named out the agreements that we were signing and authorizing.
Move approval.
Second.
On favor?
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
I can visually see him say aye. District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. C thirty-three for discussion.
C thirty-three for discussion. I just want to pull, and this is the CRA, is that we giving out money to the different cities. I especially want our staff to go back to the table with Newport Ritchie, Port Ritchie, and go look at which ones are actually blighted properties, which ones are not, and see if we get some concessions, as we did years ago, to remove the properties that are top-quality properties that don't need to be under that. That's a burden on the taxpayers. So I'll move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. C thirty-three for discussion.
C thirty-three for discussion. I just want to pull, and this is the CRA, is that we giving out money to the different cities. I especially want our staff to go back to the table with Newport Ritchie, Port Ritchie, and go look at which ones are actually blighted properties, which ones are not, and see if we get some concessions, as we did years ago, to remove the properties that are top-quality properties that don't need to be under that. That's a burden on the taxpayers. So I'll move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Okay, we're now going to take up our time certain. Sorry, sorry, those of you here for the resolutions, but we'll get to you in a second. So could those that are here for the eleven fifteen time certain, that's AM Skills and University of Florida, and whoever else wants to attend, please approach the mic. I think we have some board members here. And a welcome to the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners. Sorry, we don't usually have that much public comment, but coming from the storms and all the things happening here, we had a full morning of it. Up, our screens just went out.
They're supposed to have a reminder.
Oh, okay. So, good morning, Tom. Does he have to name and address? Okay, name and address for the record. Thank you.
Do our proclamation.
Oh, yeah, we can do the proclamation first.
The resolution?
The resolution, yes.
Yes, ma'am. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number, let me make sure I got the right one. Yes, twenty-five dash zero six two, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing the tenth anniversary of AM Skills. Whereas AM Skills was formed in twenty fourteen as a Florida not-for-profit organization established as an economic development initiative to help manufacturers recruit, train, and sustain a skilled workforce with the mission of transforming lives and strengthening communities through workforce training and apprenticeships for youths, adults, veterans, the uniquely abled, and the economically disadvantaged. And whereas AM Skills has spent the last decade transforming lives by providing hands-on technical training programs designed to prepare individuals for in-demand careers in skilled trades and manufacturing. And whereas the AM Skills Career Directory Boot Camp Program has helped hundreds of adults by offering a unique immersive experience that prepares individuals to meet the needs of local employers, fostering a skilled workforce aligned with industry demands and facilitating the launch of new careers. And whereas AM Skills has pioneered first-of-its-kind programs for adults, including youth and adult pre-apprenticeships and apprenticeship programs, and offering nationally-recognized micro-credentials and industry certifications for machining, robotics, and mechatronics, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Which have set new standards for workforce development and created pathways to success for individuals of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas AM Skills has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to youth development by establishing a scalable high school workforce training model, started at Anclote High School and set to expand to two additional schools in Pasco County in two thousand and twenty-five, designed to assist our public, private, and homeschooled students overcome difficulties in implementing career and technical education, and providing students with practical skills, industry-recognized certification, and a clear path to career success. And whereas AM Skills has expanded its community impact by constructing the first AM Skills Workforce Innovation Center, a fifteen-thousand-square-foot advanced manufacturing training facility in Holiday, Florida. The facility is intended to spark redevelopment and training opportunities for underserved residents, providing greater access to resources and support for economic revitalization of the region. And whereas, over the past ten years, AM Skills has served thousands of people ages thirteen through seventy-two, becoming a vital resource for businesses, students, and job seekers, and contributing to the vibrancy and economic stability of Pasco County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby recognizes AM Skills on its tenth anniversary and celebrates the accomplishments they have achieved over the past ten years, and looks forward to the future as AM Skills continues to transform the lives of members within our community. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this tenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Okay. Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Tom Madonna. I'm the president and CEO of AM Skills, and I just want to thank the Pasco County Commission for your foresight. Ten years ago, you all really saw the connection between workforce development and workforce and economic development. And essentially, that is why we are created, to help with that specific area. While our primary purpose has been to help the manufacturing industry, we first focus on the person, and that results in helping to fill these much-needed jobs in this industry and others. We are a five oh one C three, and as a result of that, we've been creating solutions specifically to identify what are the problems that are facing in our schools, as well as recruiting in these industries and trying to come up with solutions that address that. As a result, we've created a pathway that clearly takes somebody who has no skills or has no idea about these valuable industries and careers, and help them not just get into the industry, launch a career, but also continue to upskill to help them get to higher wages. As a part of this journey, we've achieved numerous national certifications that are recognized by these industries. We've received articulation agreements with our local colleges. We've established the first Florida Department of Education pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship in several of our occupations in the advanced manufacturing industry. Many of our youth today have no idea what they want to do. They're not exposed anymore to the careers that are actually, are different careers that are available to them in the trades. As a result of that, we've been able to establish numerous programs that help to excite them, help them make these type of programs aware, such as our youth camps, such as Build a Three D Printer Camp. We have career discovery days where we have high school and homeschool kids come over to learn about the different careers. We have partners with Pasco County and the Utilities Department to help create a pipeline for your own utilities areas. We also have created technical training programs for homeschools, and this is something we've recently launched and are looking for that to expand in the future. Lastly, as we mentioned earlier, we are expanding our high school program. We will be having three high schools starting in the year two thousand and twenty-five We will be having three high schools, starting in the year 2025 in Pasco County, which will, these will be geographically located across the county so that students can get to them, but also to be a standardized curriculum that'll, and providing support to the teachers who are a part of that. You all have heard about our high school, or excuse me, our boot camp program for adults. This is a great two-week expedited program to help people who are looking for new careers or to change their careers, and results in getting right into existing jobs or new jobs that they haven't pursued before. As a result of that program, over the year, this just this past year, we've had issued over three hundred certifications, industry-recognized certifications, and a result of the people, we've secured jobs for hundreds, resulting in over fifteen million dollars of economic impact to our community. You mentioned that we have our workforce training center that we've launched just this last year, and coming up on this Saturday, we are actually inviting you all and our commission, and as well as the public, to come to the first holiday career, excuse me, the first holiday community block party. We, this is meant to help get people to come out, to learn who we are, and to, um, to learn about the careers, but also just to enjoy the holiday season. To close, I just wanted to make a final announcement of a special announcement. We're looking, we're always looking to the future. We want to again thank our commissioners and, uh, and our board members, who we have several with us today, as well as our community, and DC Jaeger, who is an Ametrol partner with us. And essentially, to close, I want to make our final announcement. We are very proud and excited to announce that we have created a collaborative partnership agreement with the University of Florida, Florida Semiconductor Institute. This is an amazing opportunity for us to expand our youth programs as well as our career discovery bootcamps and other programs, not only locally, but also throughout the state. I want to invite Dr. Jack Judy, who's a Deputy Director of Workforce with the University of Florida's Florida Semiconductor Institute, to say a few words, followed by Mr. Leroy Yancey, who's the Chairman of the AM Skills Board.
Thank you very much. We welcome you, Dr. Judy.
Good morning. Yes, I'm Jack Judy. I'm a professor of electrical and computer engineering at the University of Florida, but today I stand before you as the Deputy Director for Workforce Development at the Florida Semiconductor Institute, which has a mission of making Florida the world leader in specialty electronics and packaging. And we have a major research mission, but also this workforce mission. Although we may be stationed currently in Gainesville, we have a statewide view. And we've been partnering with advanced teams and thought leaders across the state who we see to, to, to work with to develop new ways of engaging with this workforce across the state and growing it to the level needed for our semiconductor industry, which is actually quite advanced, and to make it even stronger as it's growing to meet the national, international demands for its products. And so, yes, we've signed an MOU with AM Skills and are excited about partnering with them to promote its development of the kind of thing we, we need to perform this kind of workforce development and to help disseminate it across the state. So I thank you for your time and your vision to support that effort and our partnership with it, and we look forward to sharing the outcomes going forward.
Thank you very much. And now we have our Chairman of the Board.
Good morning. Today marks a significant milestone for workforce development in Florida as we celebrate a transformative partnership between Florida Semiconductor Institute and AM Skills. Together, we are addressing the urgent need for a skilled workforce in the rapidly growing semiconductor and microelectronics industries, which are vital to US, to the US economy and global competitiveness. Through this partnership, we are not only equipping individuals with critical skills, but also providing pathways to high-wage, high-demand careers that can transform lives and strengthen, strengthen communities. We're proud to stand alongside FSI, the University of Florida, and Ametrol in this mission to prepare Florida's future workforce. Together, we are building a pipeline of talent that will ensure Florida's leadership in the semiconductor and microelectronics sectors for years to come. Thank you to the Polk County Commission for recognizing-
Pasco, Pasco. I will correct you.
I appreciate that. To the Pasco County Commission for recognizing the importance of this initiative and for your continued support of workforce innovation. We're excited about the opportunities this partnership will create for individuals, families, and industries throughout our great state. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I see we have some other board members, so if you want to introduce yourself, you guys come on up, introduce yourself, and then we're going to take a photo.
Vico Nelson, I'm on the Board of AM Skills for a number of years, and it's been an amazing journey so far, not least through the work of, of, of yourself, Kathy, and, and, and Tom. So excited about the future, excited about this new agreement with the, the University of Florida, and really, uh, we're determined to stay in Pasco County, by the way.
And Vico was CEO of Metler Toledo. And Dr. McGee.
Hi, guys. Joe McGee. I joined AM Skills Board just recently, particularly because of some of their initiatives with special needs kids. I run a robotics company, and I've asked Catherine to look at doing the development and training for the people we need to scale that company, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to introduce themselves? Okay, all right, well, we're going to come down and take a photo with you all.
If I, Commissioner Starkey, go ahead.
And congratulations on your ten-year anniversary, Commissioner Mariano.
And Commissioner Starkey, thanks for your dedicated involvement with us from when you were in the school board twenty years ago to now all the way through. As, as I've been very supportive as well to try to help grow, and I think what you guys are doing is phenomenal. And I'm so excited to hear about the Semiconductor Institute involvement. You know, IFIS has been a great partner. Florida Association of Counties works very closely with University of Florida. When they see this coming up, and Tom, you and I have met with developers, and now that John Legge's in school, I think there's a huge opportunity, if we can make it work, to go right down from Hudson High School, the campus that's right there. You've got a hundred and sixty-acre park with some other industrial land right around it that's going to be growing right to it. We think it would be a phenomenal place to grow, train right from there, as well as other features too, so I'd like to make sure we do explore that. We know the Ten Bay Partnership years ago said this, at least thirty-some-odd thousand jobs out there that could be filled if they were trained to go forward. So I know every time you guys are, are training people, there's a job created. So we want to make sure we keep on pushing that every step of the way. And something we brought in a few years ago was Pepin Academy from Hillsborough. Got some great things there that could, we could work cooperately to. Those kids are amazing. They can do repetitive tasks when they know what they got to do. They're awesome. We've seen them putting musical performance on, they're out of this world. So I know that, I'm glad you're tapping into it because it gets great up-
Joe's son graduated from Pepin and St. Leo.
Okay. So that, I mean, just phenomenal opportunities that now that kids that were kind of left behind now can go and live great productive lives. Just came from the Gary Line ribbon cutting yesterday. They had projected to do, I think it was four hundred jobs, three hundred jobs, over three years. In less than nine months, they filled six hundred jobs. Now, interesting, forty or fifty came from the Bronx to come down to live here, but the rest was jobs from around here. So we know this great opportunity there to work with and to, to what you guys are doing. This is very exciting stuff, and I want to just say, I know this Board is a hundred percent behind what you're doing, and we want to help you even grow bigger and stronger whatever way we can.
Okay, we'll come down for the photo.
We have the resolution is signed.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see you.
Okay, you guys stand behind and I'll come here.
All right, ready, one, two, and three.
Did David get a picture? I want to get David in a picture.
Oh, is David yet?
Yes. Mic's up here. Mic's up here. Ready, one, two, and three.
Just get a couple over. AM Skills. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I have a challenge because I have to leave. David Engel is supposed to leave too, because we have an event with these guys. So David, David, how long is your Wiregrass presentation? Because I, we still have these guys over here, so is- Okay, well, I'm gonna, I don't even know how to, how to-
Commissioner Starkey, I just wanted to clear, one of the items that's on regular agenda is, is yours. It's R seventy-four. It was for time certain eleven, but I just want to make sure that, of records clear that you, you're saying that this one is being withdrawn.
Yes, they, the robotics team had a competition.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure which one to pull up.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I give you a suggestion. I think you should do the Wiregrass one first, because we all need to have that discussion. The others, if you had to leave, it would, I think it'd be okay.
All right, we'll pull up, sorry, guys.
We have not done resolutions yet. I just wanted to point that out. However, the Chair would like to manage that. Usually, resolutions are done before regular.
I know, but I have to leave.
No problem.
And they may need my vote.
Just wanted to know.
So we'll pull David up, okay? David's supposed to leave too, so as soon as he's done with that.
Good morning, David Engel, Planning and Economic Development Director. Approximately forty to fifty years ago, Wesley Chapel was a quiet crossroad in our community, blessed with a robust citrus and cattle industry. And in fact, one of our commissioners had a citrus stand in Wesley Chapel, and he was known back then as the mayor of Wesley Chapel on Oakley. Today, and this month in particular, Consumer Affairs has designated Wesley Chapel as the best place to move to in the state of Florida. Fifty high-population centers were evaluated across the state for safety, affordability, economy, health, quality of life, and education, and Wesley Chapel is number one. And in fact, and kudos to our Pasco Sheriff's Department, it's second in the state for the lowest crime rate in the state. So that's what Wesley Chapel is today. And today, we're, we're going to probably undertake, well, we will, undertake a project that will define and create a downtown for Wesley Chapel, and it's known as Wiregrass Legacy. The project is located, bookended north and south by Chansey Road to the north, State Road fifty-six to the south. It's contiguous to the Wiregrass Sports Complex. It also is contiguous to Orlando Health to the north. And the Raymond James site is approximately seven o'clock to the star on that map. The property is known as M seven. M seven is in the designated DRI, approved MPUD. It consists of approximately a hundred and thirty acres, and it is located in the urban service area. The project that we're, that's before the Board today is for Phase One of Legacy. It consists of a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office development, primarily two seventy-five thousand square foot office buildings, a hotel and conference element of fifteen thousand square feet of conference, a hundred and fifty-room hotel. We have a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of entertainment, retail and shops, as well as restaurants. And lastly, we have vertically-integrated mid-rise, urbanized construction. And the project is designated, and I, here on the site plan, this is an illustrative site plan of Phase One. And after I speak, Wiregrass Ranch will be here to showcase Cordy Gallison Partners' architectural rendition of this project. Cordy Gallison Partners is one of the premier placemaking, architectural, and urban design firms in the country. They've done wonderful work here at Celebration over in Orlando, as well as magnificent work in Alexandria, Virginia, and, and there are some, they are a premier design firm. So the, the ad valorem aspect of this economic incentive proposal is to allow for fifty million square feet of ad valorem rebates. How that works is the developer will pay their taxes, and then the following year, some money of that tax payment will be made available to incentivize this project. At no time will they ever take more than fifty percent of the net cash flow going into the general fund. The purpose of this fifty million dollars is to incentivize and help finance eighty-four and a half million dollars in public infrastructure. The maximum rebate period is up to thirty years, and this is a very important component of this project. Wiregrass has agreed to preserve and maintain one million four hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of office and light industrial as, as part of this incentive package. And to, to reach the goal of obtaining fifty million dollars in tax rebates, they have to build much of this office and get it CO'd. The net annual general fund revenue during the rebate period at full buildout, the county will annua two million six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The annual gross county contribution is five hundred and seventy-five million dollars. And this project will generate directly four thousand and nine hundred employees. The induced effect would be about seven thousand new jobs here for Pasco County. Now, I'd like to invite Wiregrass up. Scott Sheridan is here, I believe Scott Clark-Hobby, the attorney, and also the Porter family. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Sheridan with Wiregrass Ranch. You're going to speak on behalf of Legacy Wiregrass Ranch, as David just walked you through. Waiting for my slides to come up here. As David just mentioned to you, as we sit here today, Wiregrass is less than half-built out. It's probably about thirty-five, forty percent built out. We're about one point four billion, excuse me, just getting over a little bit of the ick. About one point four billion of tax base today. We generate over ten million dollars a year in county operating revenue to the county today as we sit here, again, less than halfway developed. David showed you where, where Legacy is, kind of represented by the star, right in the heart of the project, immediately adjacent to the new Orlando Health campus, you know, less than half a mile, walking distance to the Wiregrass Sports Campus, and easily accessible to all of Wiregrass Ranch, kind of in the center of the project. So this is our, our site plan. This is maybe a little more illustrative than what David had showed you. Again, what we're developing is sitting on about thirty acres. Again, David's touched upon all the retail, the, the office, residential, and so forth. That quantity of development is typically developed in a suburban form of development on about eighty to a hundred acres within Pasco County. So we're doing it on about thirty acres, really pushing for vertical density, true mixed use, and, and intensity that we're, I know we're all looking for to the county to, to continue to use, to capitalize on these public funds and infrastructure. We could not build this project without your partnership. There's no way we could, we could possibly afford to, to develop this and to force the development community to, to really embrace this, this, this form of development. As David touched on, this is a thirty-year timeline in the EDA. We did a financial analysis and shared this with, with David and with staff some time ago. If we, if Wiregrass was really developed in a more conventional MPUD scenario, as we all know, significant amount of residential, not that much office and retail and so forth. And then we looked at it also as we're tending toward and are already facilitating, and that is higher-density residential, more office, more retail, obviously significant healthcare. We, we project, and our, we presented this to staff, we projected over this thirty-year time horizon, the county will actually see over two hundred and eighty million dollars of additional ad valorem benefit over that timeline period from creating more projects like Legacy within Wiregrass Ranch. And this is consistent with prior discussions you've had with the folks from Urban Three from Asheville, and, and as we study the, the land use benefits of, of pushing density. This is a bird's eye view of what we envisioned for, for Legacy. Ernst &amp; Young, you recently adopted the Ernst &amp; Young Economic Growth Program Strategy. And we are, Wiregrass and Legacy in particular, are squarely aligned with these goals and objectives. One of those goals was to continue diversification of the economy and increasing growth in higher-wage, high, traded industry jobs and, and sectors, and also building a workforce that was responding to the future employment needs of Pasco County. Life sciences and medical obviously were significant drivers and the most significant element of that report, and the largest sector for economic growth. We will have over one point four million square feet specifically tailored for this purpose. This agreement specifically sets that aside. As we stand here today, currently, we have over five hundred and seventy million dollars being investment, of private investment, going in to life sciences and medical within Wiregrass Ranch, five hundred and seventy million dollars. We have an additional hundred and eighty-five million dollars of projects that we are currently working on in the permitting process or in the queue within Wiregrass, together over the next few, now and over the next few years. That's over seven hundred and fifty million dollars being investment, being invested in Wiregrass and life sciences and professional office services. And we're only getting started. And that's not including a lot of the prior investments we're all aware of from Advent Health and Florida Medical Clinic and so forth. So Orlando Health is, is kind of the southern anchor to, to Legacy Wiregrass Ranch. They will have an additional hundred and fifty thousand square feet- They will have an additional one hundred and fifty thousand square feet of medical office on their campus. Their thousands of employees will be within walking distance of Legacy, and we have worked very closely with them to co-locate them with, and they, they were actually very much involved in our Tordy Gallis planning process to, to come up with the original vision of Legacy and their campus being integrated into, into what we're, what we're trying to build here. Here you'll see a, just a couple of slides, and I'll, I'll show you a, a video here in a second. Here you'll see a couple, you know, walking paths from the Wiregrass Parks Campus over to Legacy to enjoy lunch. We have a planned entertainment venue that's within the, the heart of the project for concerts, for plays, for different shows that could be either inside the entertainment venue and also spill out into the common area, into the green space. Obviously, a very much pedestrian focused, walkable design to, to all of Legacy. A food hall. Ernst &amp; Young also set goals to strengthen the, the talent pipeline, and we're significantly focused on that with PHSC. No doubt you're aware of their, their alliance with Orlando Health and Advent and continue to grow their, their nursing program. And just imagine all the nursing program and students that can come eat at the Wiregrass Food Hall on a regular basis as well within Legacy. This is a view standing, you know, standing at our, one of our four or five story balconies looking down into the, the common area within all walkable, that's a plan to, to serve the residents and not just of Wiregrass Ranch, but obviously of Greater Wesley Chapel and Pasco County. Again, this is standing in, on top of that entertainment venue, looking down at, at this, our common green space, our, our main gathering area. I think the most important objective and goal of the Ernst &amp; Young recommendation was to elevate the county's image and create a quality of place. And they specific, I'm going to read to you, I know you know this, but I'm, I'm going to read to you. They said, establish a funding mechanism to support high impact developments that contribute to live, work, play, environment for Pasco County. These funds could be used for green space within a mixed use development, capital for new entertainment or sports venues, or developments that could bring increased walkability, vibrancy and tax revenues to the county. That is exactly what we believe Legacy Wiregrass Ranch will do. Play the video, please? Now, we have a video, instead of just still images, we actually have a video fly through to show you of taking you down through the community put together by our partners at Tordy Gallis. So this is looking south, you can see Orlando Health in the distance there and their campus, which is actively under construction. Again, this is phase one. You see some of the four or five story office buildings that are contemplated there within the heart of the project. Again, a food hall that'll anchor that public space, restaurants, clearly walkable. This whole area is actually planned to also be shut down so the whole area can be, for vehicles, so the whole area can be pedestrian friendly. You'll see there's a trail system that comes out of our trail network to the east that ties into, into the, into downtown Wesley Chapel into Legacy. That's our off, hotel with conference facilities there on the right-hand side of your screen, contemplating a hundred and fifty room hotel there to help anchor this space. Obviously, a lot of entertainment, a lot of food and dining within this, within Legacy. Our jewel box cubes, as they're called, these small, isolated, high-profile restaurants in the center of the project. And you'll see, the only parking that you see is just a little bit of parallel parking. This entire project, almost the entirety of the project, is in structured parking garages buried behind the buildings. That's the way we're creating this dense, intense urban landscape with, with the opportunity to develop vertically and get this true mixed use, and we have to really push this within So I know you're pressed for time, so in consideration, we, again, we believe we are squarely consistent with your adopted growth program strategy. Together, we believe, working together with you all, we can elevate the image and place of, of Pasco County with Legacy Wiregrass Ranch. And of course, we would appreciate your continued support here to answer any questions you may have.
Gosh, that's awesome. Board members, any questions? Commissioner Mariano.
Hey, Ms. Chair. Now, I want to say, Wiregrass, you know, meeting with the Porters many, many years ago when they came back with their dreams about what they wanted to go do, I was very impressed with it. I saw a video much like this when they were going to do the Wiregrass Mall. And I'm going to tell you, what they brought out was exactly what we saw in the video. So I know they'll deliver. And I talked, and it's unfortunate we didn't get to talk ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
Because I would have liked to have a longer discussion with this, but I'm thrilled with all the commercial aspects of the whole thing. The only concern I have is the way the structure is as far as apartments go. You know, when I, when I see shows, and my wife watches all the time between all this real estate in New York, California, wherever these cities are, and how people own properties are spending five hundred thousand, maybe a million, whatever, they're creating their own wealth. And you get people invested in the community rather than just an apartment where when that money's paid, the apartment guy makes a lot of money, but the people don't have anything to fall back to. I want to see people be able to come in there and start with small, grow their wealth, personal wealth, and go and go and go. I don't know exactly, and again, this was one of my questions, we sat down, when we were going to sit down, was to talk about, you know, what are we going to do as far as like helping the nurses start with like a one bedroom, grow to a two bedroom, go to a three bedroom, without having to rent but to own? Have you got any plans in there where that can be looked at?
We, we look at that, we, obviously affordability is, is an important part of all the workforce. To, to your point, you know, nurses, students and so forth are, are within Wiregrass as it is. Legacy Wiregrass Ranch, this project in particular, will, will be an expensive project. Now, that being said, we have the opportunity to set aside some workforce units, no doubt we can look at that with our partners. And we can, we'll also have multifamily in and around and adjacent to Legacy as well across the street, on 56, up and down Bruce P. Downs. And so there's definitely those opportunities within Wiregrass Ranch as a whole, the entire five thousand acres, if not specifically within Legacy Wiregrass Ranch on just that thirty acres, there definitely are within Wiregrass.
Because what I'm looking at is, again and again, I think people, you're going to have some high-line doctors that will pay a lot of money and can pay a lot of money to own a property, and they're going to want to be like right there. And that's, it happens around the world. I want to see how we can make this happen here. Can we make it happen here? And frankly, I don't mind if we even stretched out the term, set more different monies up, gave you more hotel space, whatever it may be, to help it, make it work. But I want, I want to see, I don't want to just see more apartments coming in. Those people come in, come out and go. I want people invested in the community. I want them to have a chance to start small, grow their wealth so they can start with a one bedroom, move to a two bedroom, move to a three bedroom. And, and if they choose to go to that lifestyle, staying right there, so be it. And the demographics are phenomenal in Wire, in the, in the whole Wesley Chapel area. That's why that area's grown, that's why things have come. But again, I would like to see something in, in a component to where we can get it, where people can actually own property in there, not just all apartment rentals.
Yes, sir. We'll work on that.
Commissioners, any other comments?
Wiregrass has been showing us great things all along, ever since you first started. So I believe this project, the way it's worked out to be, is going to be, it will be a legacy because it's going to be a, a great project right in the center of Wiregrass, and, and there'll be a lot more coming because of this project, so.
Thank you.
And I'm going to agree, I want to thank you for working with David. And, you know, if you were here this morning, you heard some comments on protecting the taxpayers' interest, and I, I truly believe we have done that. Part of the penny for Pasco is for economic development, and in my mind, we are, we're building the downtown of Pasco County here, and that, that's important. We don't just want low-density sprawl everywhere. We need to have some centers like this. And I think that you guys have methodically shown great stewardship of your property, and, and I'm, I'm excited for this. I kind of agree a little bit with Commissioner Mariano that it would be great if we could find some ways to add some kind of facilities that provide ownership, but I don't see people building condos anymore. I don't know what's, what's happened to that world. I don't know if it's the, the new laws up in Tallahassee, but we don't, we don't see condos being built anymore. We do see townhomes, but, but anyway, I will vote in support of this. I do need to go quickly, so Commissioner Oakley, quickly.
Move approval.
Okay.
I'll second the discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Chair, can I, can I just craft the vote, what we're asking for, please?
Okay.
Well, before, so let me, before you do that, just quick discussion.
We're in discussion.
So just a little further discussion before you go further. So Scott, I'm willing to work with you to, to contemplate more if to go to this rental component. You know, condominiums on the water, anything three miles in, has got all those new state laws. That's causing prices to drop. Internally, they're still strong. Just saw a graph that condo prices still rising outside of that, all around the state. If you needed more incentives to go forward, whether it be term, amounts, et cetera, I'm willing to work with that to try to make that component work, because I think that builds even a stronger fabric, where people know, I'm going to raise my kids here, I want, I may want to live there, et cetera. I want to have that option to it rather than just having the rental thing. So happy to work with you if we got to craft something later. I want to get, I'll be supportive of this going forward, but I want to just put that in your window to try to find a way to make that work.
Understood.
I'm willing to work, work with you.
Yeah, absolutely. Trust me, we would love to have more invested residents in the community, not just within the Wiregrass, but within Legacy. So we're absolutely willing to work with you on this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We're asking today that the board approve the economic development agreement term sheet that I prepared, and it's in your packet. Authorize the county attorney's office and Office of Economic Growth to draft a formal economic development agreement. Authorize the county administrator to approve and execute the economic development agreement on behalf of the board. And once fully executed, we will memorialize that and provide that as a noted item in your agenda to maintain board transparency. Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second, and we have roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have to go. Commissioner Mariano, will you please do these two resolutions real quick?
Yes.
Abby, Ms. Abby, congratulations.
Yeah, I'll pass it. Where is that gavel?
Right here.
RS one?
Clerk had it, so you never met.
I'm hiding.
And I'll, I'll probably be late to the one-thirty, so he's going to start the meeting.
I'm sorry, where are we?
RS one?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Just a moment while I get organized here. All right, I'm ready. So I see everybody's up here already, so I'll go ahead and get started. A resolution number twenty-five dash zero six zero, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Lane Mendelson and Abby Mendelson for their generosity in the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive. Whereas Lane Mendelson is a distinguished member of Pasco County's business community and has been a dedicated supporter of the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive since 2021, and whereas Mr. Mendelson and his family's deep philanthropic involvement in the campaign has played a crucial role in removing barriers to educational success for some of the county's most vulnerable students. And whereas Mr. Mendelson's commitment to giving back to the community has been instilled in his daughters, fostering a new generation of confident, self-assured young women who will one day become leaders in our community. And whereas Mr. Mendelson and his daughter Abby Mendelson have displayed an unwavering commitment to improving the lives of Pasco County students in need, and whereas through their participation in the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive since 2021, they have generously donated one thousand four hundred and ninety-three pairs of shoes and two thousand one hundred and four pairs of socks, ensuring that children in our community have access to proper footwear. And whereas their contributions not only meet the immediate practical needs of students, but also foster a sense of dignity, belonging and overall well-being among the recipients. And whereas Mr. Mendelson and Ms. Abby's dedication serve as an inspiring example of selfless community service and philanthropy, encouraging others to step forward and support those in need. And whereas their efforts have made a lasting impact and countless, on countless students and families in Pasco County, creating a ripple effect of kindness, generosity and support throughout the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes Lane Mendelson and Abby Mendelson for their extraordinary generosity and commitment to the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive and encourages others to follow their lead in supporting our community. Done and resolved in regular session with a form present and voting this tenth day of December, 2024.
Move approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Roll call, or no?
Oh, roll call, yeah, sorry.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
And District three, Chairman Starkey is, is absent.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Oakley?
Okay. Man, what a great day it is. A lot of kids in our school system and all are going to receive a lot of socks and shoes because of all your good work, Abby. Abby is one of my little girls that I've been noticing a long time, her parents, Lane and Mandy, both have given both their daughters a great opportunity in, in the country. They do traveling together in, in many different areas, and these girls are the whole world out in front of them, and they will continue doing great things in Pasco County and in their lives in the future. So, so grateful for all of you and your family, the way you, way you work with each other and, and actually give them the opportunity to see the world firsthand as young people. A lot of people don't get that opportunity, but also Rachel and Abby both get that opportunity, and we thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Yeager?
Well, I had just heard about your project, and I was so excited. I was like, I want to help out, put me down, I'm volunteering, and then the storms came. So I look forward to helping you guys, Abby. I think what you're doing is amazing, and I would love to help, help you guys on your, next year. So whether it's a box at our business or anything we can do to help you guys. So congratulations and thank you for all the work you do.
You know, Lane and Mandy, what you've done raising your two girls, just amazing. Your dedication to the family just is incredible. Mandy, you remind my daughter Lauren when she saw a project that was going on, and she wanted to help out, and she jumped in and made something great happen, and having your family behind you has got to be great. I know your sister wishes she was here. We were actually talking to Lane back and forth, I says, well, she's got a physics test in the morning, all right, what about in the morning? What if we switch it to the afternoon? Can we make it go to get, to have the whole family together? But it just worked out where Rachel couldn't met. I know she's done some great things as well and been great in the community, but very reprioritizing, Mandy, of all the great stuff you're doing, we know you can do some great stuff, too. All right. Anyone else want to say anything else?
So Commissioner, I really wanted to highlight their efforts because without leaders in the community like Lane and Mr. Hakim, who will come after, we could not make this happen. We're taking away a concern from our children. And thanks to Lane's involvement and his daughter, we've collected over thirty-seven hundred shoes this year. And actually, we just received a donation of five thousand dollars to get additional shoes and socks for the kids of Pasco County. Thank you, Lane, for your generosity. We could not do this without you.
And I'll tell you, Mandy, when I was, Mandy, when I, when I was growing up, every year before we'd start school, we'd drive from our town to another town where they had like a Converse factory. And every year, our family would all get a pair of sneakers. They weren't very expensive, but they were brand new for us, and it was, it was great to start the school year off with a new pair every year. My parents made sure we did that. So I know what you're doing here is just phenomenal work, so go ahead and say a few words.
Hi, my name is Abby Mendelson. This is my fourth year doing Two Good Souls. I'd like to, like inspire people, and it feels so good to donate to people who don't have as much as most of us have. And I'd like to thank my father and our family business for also helping. Thank you for letting me be here.
All right, I'll bless you.
Great.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and to Mr. Cabala for all of the support and also Ms. Kathy. It's, obviously, the reason we're giving is to make a positive impact, that's the primary goal, but my secondary and maybe even more meaningful goal to me is that Abby and Rachel, that's, that's my legacy, and I'm working to inspire them and teach them so that they can be lifelong residents in Pasco and make a positive residents in Pasco and make a positive impact for generations to come. And, you know, Abby has joined me on Two Good Souls and many other things, so has Rachel, but individually, they've all also done their own things. So, you know, Abby's donated her hair, you know, a couple of times to an organization that makes wigs for children with hair loss. Rachel and Abby have both done that. Rachel is raising a steer for the Pasco County Fair this year, and she's going to give a portion of her profit. I don't know if she's going to have a profit, but she says she's going to give a portion of her profit to a charity in Pasco, so that will be our next treasure hunt, is to find who's in need and what's in need. And we're, now for the fourth quarter, our donation is going to be to Catholic charities to help the senior citizens who've been affected by the storms. So that's, every quarter, we're making a charitable donation focused in Pasco, and that's, that's the next one. So I just want to say thank you for your support. Thank you all, and look forward to doing more good things in Pasco.
All right, thank you.
Y'all, join me down front, we'll take pictures.
Everybody step back just a little bit for me. All right, ready, one, two, and three. There we go.
And so because these things don't happen in a vacuum, right? We leverage these partnerships and we get people together. But before I get started, I really want to say thank you to our property appraiser, Mike Wells, for his support. Also Morgan Laval in his office, Nicole O'Neill, who, this would never happen without her. All of these partnerships make a difference. And so Mr. Hakim has been also a pivotal part of allowing us to leverage funds to make sure that we can achieve better results year by year. And with the storms, we didn't know if we were going to get enough shoes and socks for the kids of Pasco, but we did, and it was thanks to also his participation. So with that, if we can recognize.
We'll call RS two.
Thank you.
This is resolution number 25. Jacques and your wife, please come up to the podium. Thank you. That's good. No, to the podium. Yes, to the podium. I'm sure you'll want to say a couple of words after this. Thank you. Resolution number 25-061, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Jacques Hakim for his generosity and contributions to the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive. Whereas Jacques Hakim is a distinguished businessman, philanthropist, and educator who has demonstrated unwavering commitment to the well-being of the students in Pasco County and the Tampa Bay area. And whereas Mr. Hakim has made significant contributions to the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive, a charitable initiative that provides shoes and socks to Pasco County students in need, ensuring they receive one of the most basic necessities for comfort and success in their academic and personal lives. And whereas his extraordinary generosity has greatly impacted the lives of countless students who otherwise might face challenges due to lack of proper footwear, allowing them to focus on their education, health, and overall development. And whereas Mr. Hakim's philanthro, philanthro, that's a hard word for me to say today, philanthropy, sets an inspiring example of community leadership and dedication to helping the less fortunate and reflects the core values of compassion, selflessness, and service. Through his generosity, Mr. Hakim has developed partnerships with the Office of the Pasco County Property Appraiser, Mike Wells, Lane Mendelson, and his family in the Pasco County Public Services Branch. And whereas through his involvement in education and community service, Mr. Hakim has not only provided material assistance, but has also demonstrated his commitment to fostering hope and opportunity for the youth in Pasco County. And whereas his contributions have been instrumental in ensuring the success of the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive year after year, thereby helping alleviate the struggles facing, I'm sorry, the struggles faced by underprivileged students and promoting quality and dignity for everyone. And whereas Pasco County formally recognizes and honors Jacques Hakim for his outstanding contributions to the Two Good Souls Shoes and Socks Drive and for his continued dedication to the welfare and advancement of children in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby recognizes Jacques Hakim for his ongoing generosity, compassion, and commitment to uplifting and enhancing the lives of Pasco County's most vulnerable students. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of December 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Okay.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Jaeger.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey is absent.
Commissioner Oakley?
We certainly appreciate everything you do for us. It takes many people over a big county like we have today to do exactly what you do in stepping forward and helping out in these occasions with Two Good Souls, and such a good cause for the entire county to work like we did. And it actually is great that it could even be carried out because of the storms and issues we had during that time. But it was very much a success, again, like it has been the last few years, so. But you're a big part in that success, and we certainly thank you for all you do.
Commissioner?
So first of all, congratulations and thank you. I worked with Title I kids for 10 years, and I actually would ask some family members and friends if they could specifically donate shoes for our kids, because it, like their self-esteem, you know, they need, they need clothes without holes, they need shoes, and it's just very much needed, and those kids really appreciate it, so thank you.
Hakim, fellow Rotarian, you know, I remember way back when, when Mike Wells made an introduction, Kathy Pearson was super excited about the whole project going on, and you're stepping up with your tremendous generosity. This program's grown, and you were part of the original kickoff to make a go, so we greatly appreciate what you're doing for the community every step of the way, so thank you. Like to say a few words?
Yeah, sure. First of all, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for the recognition. It's an honor. I want to thank my wife, because without her, I can't do what I do. She actually likes me to be outside the house, so I tend to spend a lot of time in the community. But also, I want to thank my good friend, Mike Wells. He's opened up so many doors for me in the community that he knows that I'm passionate about. So like you, Mr. Mariano, we grew up, we didn't have a whole lot, but it's, it's one of these things that giving back to the community is extremely important. And I wanted to thank Abby, because she's really the example for us to continue this process, and of course, my good friend, Ms. Pearson here, who really spearheaded this whole process and showed us the way. And I will tell you, I promise you, 5,000 pairs of shoes next year. So that's what we're going to do.
Wow.
Thank you.
Let's go down for a picture.
Yeah.
And then maybe, yeah, maybe when we get done with this picture, we'll bring the Mendelsons up, we'll do a picture with everybody together, too. All right?
Sorry, guys. And one more. And we got it. All right, one, two, and three, here we go. One with the phone, and for camera here. And we got it perfect, one more.
And we will now take a break till 1:30 for the public hearings. Adjourn.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Welcome to Pasco County, the fastest-growing county in the Tampa Bay area. The Pasco Board of County Commissioners is a high-performing organization with 2,700 employees, representing 57 lines of business, serving nearly 600,000 people over 740 square miles, and we're always looking for talented people to join our team. This is your opportunity to help make your community a better place to live, work, and play. If you're ready to be part of a great success story, consider a career with Pasco County Government, recently recognized as a top workplace for 2021. Opportunities include careers in utilities, public works, traffic operations, solid waste, animal services, public transportation, information technology, libraries, parks, human services, recreation and natural resources, administration, senior services, fire rescue, 911, fleet, building construction services, code enforcement, planning, environmental science, and so much more. Plus, our benefits package is tough to beat. We offer employee wellness centers, health, vision, and dental benefits, paid holidays, and tuition reimbursement, just to name a few. We are local government reimagined. We're progressive, innovative, and in many areas, Pasco County is leading the way. Want to learn more about what we do and how you can be part of it? Visit mypasco.net and click on job and volunteer opportunities. Our team is more than 2,700 strong, your neighbors, friends, and even family members. Come join Pasco County and make a difference every day.